Call the Public Health and Safety Judicial Committee to order, ROKA.
Alderman Lazaro. Alderman Jacob.
Here.
Alderman Winger.
Here.
Alderman Catalano.
Here.
Alderman Sizmarski. Alderman Roy Wesley.
Here.
Alderman Woods.
Here.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Need a pro- um, motion to approve the minutes, April tenth, two thousand tw- fourteen.
I make that motion. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Need, um, I'll make this informal motion, approve the ILEAS mutual aid agreement. I'll make that an informal motion.
Second.
Questions? ROKA, or just all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thanks for coming, Chief. Items to be considered, future meetings, Bike Patrol Unit Two, TBA, okay? P? Okay. Need a motion for German? That's a motion, I make that a motion?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, four minutes. Who's?
I'd like to call the order for a public works meeting, committee. Minute taker, please take note that the same council members are here, present. Need a motion to approve the minutes of April tenth, two thousand and fourteen.
I make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any corrections? Motion passes. Next, a report and recommendation, pay request for partial number one, Infraform Technologies, USA LLC, for sanitary sewer system rehabilitation project, year one, in the amount, not in the amount to exceed of one hundred and eighty-three thousand, two ninety-six, sixteen.
Make that an informal motion.
Second.
Any questions? No questions, ROKA?
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Next is a report and recommendation, professional service agreement, amendment number two, HR Green, Inc., engineering services and project management for the Elgin-O'Hare Project, that is my motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
In addition to that, to exceed amount of the one million seventy-nine thousand seven eighty-two.
No. No, that's number six.
That's next.
I'm sorry, don't get it, thank you.
I guess we're all in favor, right?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, next is a report and recommendation, construction engineering services agreement for the federal participation in HR Green, Inc., Wooddale Road, Irving Park Road Safety Improvement Project, in not to exceed in the amount of one million seventy-nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty-two dollars and ninety-seven cents, that is my motion.
Second.
Any questions? I have a question on that one.
I'll call you.
On the, um, on the public information coordination, I don't know who's go- can you, who can take that one, because I know HR Green's gonna be meeting with the local police officers and the fire department and school to provide information about the overview of the project. Could we include the senior citizens in there, the senior citizen club? Somebody can meet in the, they meet every first Wednesday of the month?
Sure, there should be no problem with that.
Okay, that, that's my question, thank you.
Okay.
And, um... Okay, so, all in, uh, ROKA on that one, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Just one quick question, I see there's a couple sub consultants here, is that because you guys don't have the expertise in that, or?
That's correct, the subs that we're using as for material testing, so that's why we have the sub consultants included with the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any more questions? ROKA?
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Winger?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
Next is a report and recommendation for added curb work of Montrose. That is my motion.
Second.
Motion to have a debate on it, I guess. Go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman, um, this project has a couple different options on whether what we can do, so, just to give a little bit of background, the city council approved a repayment of the North Cedar part a few weeks back, the project included only resurfacing, and everything else was supposed to be replaced in kind. Last week at our meeting, a resident from two thirty-one East Montrose stopped by to speak to the council, encouraging them to put some curbs in at his location, and at that time he wasn't really ultimately concerned about the rest of North Cedar, just the, uh, the spot in front of his house. So there's three options in front of you guys tonight that we'd like to see happen. One, don't provide any curbs, do the project as it was currently stated, as it was bid out through the process. Two, we could either, we could provide curbs at the two thirty-one East Montrose area in an amount approximately two, uh, twenty-seven hundred dollars. Or three, we could do the entire part of North Cedar, which, the amount that was in your memo was sixteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars, since Tuesday afternoon, we confirmed with our contractor, and some of the amounts changed a little bit, so the actual total of that was seventeen thousand eight hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty cents. So, those are the, so, seven, just short of eighteen thousand dollars, none of that money was budgeted for within the project, but at this time we would ask direction from the committee and the council on, uh, on what they would like to have done with the curb situation on North Cedar.
Alderman, uh, William?
I believe if we're gonna do a portion of it, we should do the, the duration of it and do the whole thing, that the other residents would probably want it as well. How many residents would be affected by it, or are there, is there only one, two, what is it?
There are four total houses on that street, there is one house directly across the street from the two thirty-one area that has brick paver, or excuse me, brick flower boxes that abut the street itself, so curbs would not be able to go in that area, we'd have to go around those, or have those removed and, and put back on to, behind the curb area. The amount that we have in here, this eighteen thousand dollars-ish, includes not doing anything to that area, so there will be, there'll be curb right up adjacent to the stone, the brick paver, or brick flower boxes that she has on either side of her driveway. And then there would be removal, and there's a, the house just to the north of two thirty-one has some existing roll curb that's in very poor condition, that we would remove and replace, and then across the street from there, where they have no curb, that would also be, that would also, new curb would be installed in that area.
So you would rec- would you recommend doing it if you're gonna extend it to some degree?
I really don't have an opinion on that one part of it.
Thank you.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, Matt, I mean, I went and looked over there, there's a lot, as you just mentioned, there's a lot of issues over there, have we really looked at that and engineered that? I mean, there's gonna be, I can see potential drainage issues by jumping into this, I mean, there's, just visually I can see great issues, and you got the paver driveways and all that, really, this is pretty quick to jump in, that, I know it's a small project, and if it was easier than, at least it appears, I would say go ahead, but I think that the potential for a few ugly nightmares to rear their head exists there, so I, I'd like to see us take a little slower approach, it's not that I don't like doing it, but, you know.
Mr. York?
Yeah, there's been no engineering done on this, when this project was put in to, just to the rehab of the street, it was just a, a cost that was allocated by the contractor out there per square feet of, of the impervial, the pervial surfaces. There is some drainage issue that would be, that wouldn't be affected at all by this, as the water drains to the north, there ultimately could be some additional work done, but, I mean, if we wanted just to put curbs in, we could still have the drainage go to the north, and it would go underneath the fence and, and overlay and drain to the, uh, the beehive in the, in the rear of the house off of, I believe it's Cara, Cara. I do know from some intel given to us by Trotter and Associates, that the lady that lives across the street from two thirty-one East Montrose might not be all as excited to get curb as the resident at two thirty-one would be to get curb, and, but I haven't talked to any of the residents to, to gain their, uh, their decision, or their, their thoughts on the whole thing.
Mayor?
Matt, number one, being it's not budgeted contingent, the money that, I know we were using some to resurface Murray and actually right in front of this Cedar, north of Montrose as well, how much is left after we do the, the asphalt? Because, I mean, it's not a budget item, so...
There, there would be money left in the contingency, I think right now we're at about forty thousand, and then that includes, so we'd have, we're forty thousand to the good right now, so another eighteen thousand, we'd still have money to do the project, whereas it's not budgeted, there's still, there's money available to do the project.
Go ahead, Matt.
And, those driveways are basically level with the street, so, I mean, the curbs would be in front of the grass only, and then like a concrete gutter, whatever you wanna call it, otherwise.
Yeah, yeah, it, it would be a depressed curb, or it would be a depression, so you'd have a, you'd have a, a concrete gutter in between the different driveways, so they would be able to flow down into the gutter and then proceed down the, the line of the curb line to the storm sewer apparatus, or the overlaying drainage area.
But as far as the...
Go ahead.
I know you mentioned something about water issues, and I know you kind of addressed them, but, put the curb in, water's gonna move a little quicker, I mean, are you sure?
No.
We're not?
No, we're not, I mean, obviously this has not been engineered.
Right.
Looking at it, it looks like there's some issues that are very, that won't, won't be totally solved by the curbs, speaking with the, um, to the inspector out there, he wasn't too, really too concerned about it, the, the, the water would still travel down the curb line and into the overlaying flow route, which it currently does, it just wouldn't go into the, it wouldn't go into the grass swale and then do it. If you go out there, and then some of you probably have, if you go to the north edge of that street, you'll see, there's a little channel that's kinda washed away a little bit, where the water flows, you can, it's pretty easily recognizable. Doing this project like this would, would it be the way that I would want it done? Probably the answer is no, because I would think that some storm sewer work should be done in that area to ultimately get it to the storm sewer that runs along the back of Cara, um, in the backyards there, and to try to clean up some of that stuff, so we wouldn't have washouts and overlaying flow route, it would just go into a pipe and, and, but, that, you know, that's my opinion, so...
Alderman Jacob?
Couple of questions, um, one, how soon do we have to, I mean, do we have to make a decision today, I mean, can we, I, I kinda would like to know what all the residents want over there, I've been...
Mr. York?
The, the project is scheduled for completion on the sixteenth of May. That, the additional streets of Murray, North Cedar, and Hy- and Hemlock are, are scheduled to all be completed by the, by the sixteenth of May. In order for us to do this project, we need pretty rapid understanding of what needs to get done out there, or that project is gonna be delayed. And I think everybody knows about that project, and then want to not have that project be delayed upon completion, but if we put new asphalt in, and then we go back and do curb later, obviously there's gonna be an additional cost, because we're gonna have to cut out new asphalt, we're gonna have to dig it out, we're gonna have to put a patch in, those kinds of things are gonna have to have it happen, so, whereas we're not between a rock and a hard place, we're walking right into that rock right about now, so we need to move forward, one way or the other.
Want a follow-up?
Yeah, I just, kind of a comment, off of Cedar, there's actually three streets that have little stubs like this, you have east on Murray, west on Hiawatha from Cedar, and both of those streets have curbs, so, and, and I know you can't answer this question, but I'm kinda surprised when they built this, that street there, that they didn't put in curbs on, you know, that stub versus other stubs. Jeff, do, I mean, you would have no idea why they would did, did that? Okay, thank you.
Mayor?
Real quick, Matt, would you have more information by next week's council meeting? Because after that, then, basically, the week after, it'd probably be too late anyway, right?
Could I have more information? I could probably have more information, I just don't know if we'll have enough. To do it the right way, I'm gonna say no, I'm not gonna have enough information by that time. To know what we have to do to make it the right way, probably, I could have that kind of information, but once that street gets laid, then we're, you know, that course has kinda left a stable, so, because I do think that if we're gonna do it, we need to address the drainage issue in that area. I understand that the resident at this location, he's looking for ways to protect his, his yard and those kinds of things, and I understand, I understand what he's going through about that, but to do, to step out and do the whole entire block, I just don't, I, I just do not think that it's, uh, it's feasible to have a decision by, uh, by Tuesday of next week, when I would have to have it in the packet for you guys, or even to bring it cold to you on Thursday night, I just don't know if I can, I don't know if I'd wanna stake, stake my name on that, that kind of information.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I mean, a, a couple things, thanks for the answer to that question. I think that that is part of the problem, we're jumping into this, it's more complex than it seems to be, it's a small street, I was thinking curb curb like B six twelve curb, and you're saying like lat ribbon, so, that homeowner might potentially not be happy with what we did at the end anyway, if he's looking for some more relief from water runoff or, or drainage going through his front there, too, there's just too many moving parts. Not only that, as Alderman Jacob brought up, there's other streets that we could look at that are done, you know, and, and thirdly, it's a bad precedent that somebody just comes in and complains that we moved a city overnight to put a street in, you know, 'cause if we can do that, I can assure you, I can wind up five or six other people in our ward, in Ward Two, that'll be glad to come in and get their streets taken care of.
So we're gonna, go on to Alderman Jacob?
Any idea what, I mean, let's say we don't make a decision yet and postpone it, how much additional money would cost? And knowing, having, doing a little research, 'cause I hate to spend the money, and then we have to deal with some drainage issues, it's gonna cost the city more money than the sixteen thousand, and then, you know, I ca- I kinda would like an idea what, how much extra would be.
Mr. York?
I guess if, I guess if I could, um, design this portion of it for you guys, it would be to, um, ultimately delay the North Cedar portion of, uh, the restructure, the reconstruction of it, and, and do all, do all of this at once, I know that's probably not what people wanted to hear, but, um, that, that's what I would do, but, we can, because if we're gonna put the asphalt in, we know, if we're gonna do, if we're gonna do anything over there, the asphalt's gonna come back out, so whether we do that in a year, or we do that in five years, or we put it in the schedule for, you know, you know, ten years out, that would be probably better if we delay it up to three to five years, because then, you know, going in and taking out brand-new asphalt isn't, if, if we do it next year, it looks like we didn't know what we were doing to start with, so...
Alderman Wesley?
We had one resident come in, no one else has said anything, correct?
Yeah, twenty-five percent of that block came in.
What?
Twenty-five percent of that block, one out of four came in.
Okay, so, I mean, if we want, put the curbs in later on, in five years, fine, let's put in the budget for fi- in five years, we put the curbs in then, but one person, and this way you could survey the area, see what the residents want, not just one person.
Alderman Jacob?
I'm not even sure if I'd be able to make a motion to approve this pending the majority of the homeowners want this, 'cause I, I really don't wanna say yes if the other three people don't want it, could I make a motion like that, Mayor?
He's not here.
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I just wanna say again, this, this is, it's too hard to put this together in that short a period of time, I mean, we're, we're opening our, ourself up to creating other issues, so we're gonna put that in, and everything that happens after that is our fault because we did that, we did it in an effort to help that resident, you know, but nobody's gonna understand that when all the water's running down the Villa Cara's houses, and that guy with the eight hundred, nine hundred thousand dollar house calls you, and goes, what the heck did you do? I mean, I'd like to know that we had it engineered, and a reasonable chance of correcting any of the issues there, and not creating any more issues. Thank you.
Mr. Wesley?
I, like I said, I would like to see this, if, let's do a survey, if the residents want it, put in a five-year plan to do it in five years. And, I was ready to make a motion, but I'll let Jeff go first.
Mr. Murris?
Yeah, but you still already approved putting the pavement in, so I think what Matt was saying is, you're gonna go rip all that out in five years, you wasted your money on the Spur Street pavement.
That's all right, we done, we done streets, full streets in Ward One, twice, within two or three years, so... Central?
Mayor?
Matt, what about the water main, I mean, they didn't go all the way in there on the water main anyways, what, so, right, there's still some water main, the houses, maybe the two front houses were connected off of Montrose, but, you know, I mean, I don't know, the water main back there may need to be done in five years.
Yeah, and those, all the things that we would normally, you know, walk through during a design phase of, uh, engineering a road project, those things weren't really done at this time, the Spur Streets were, were to get ground and overlaid, I think the total cost was about thirty-seven thousand dollars to do all the three streets, so if you divide that by three, we're talking thirteen some thousand dollars, twelve thousand dollars to do Cedars, so, whereas it's not advantageous to put asphalt down and then rip it back up, I mean, we could put asphalt down, nobody else wants the curbs, and we're not ripping it up, you know, if we survey it, and three out of four say we don't want the curbs, or we don't want any additional curbs, because one house does have curbs already, we could come, we could be sitting here with not a street done, uh, and, and then have to go back later and probably spend, you know, twenty thousand dollars instead of twelve thousand dollars because of mobilization and moving things around, and while we're right there to do the project, all this stuff could be buttoned up in a month from now.
Alderman Winger?
Thank you. So, so were you saying that we are doing new pavement on that extra portion that we're talking about where the curbs go, or may go?
Yes, we're, we're doing the, the, the whole part of North Cedar from Montrose, from Montrose to, to the end of the, where it dead ends, is about seventy percent not done, there, as they came around the corners and did the radiuses, they were done with the original, with the original, that going, when they went down Montrose, so right now there's still some of that road that's left to do, say approximately twelve to thirteen thousand dollars worth of work, that is scheduled to be done by May sixteenth, so if we wanna do anything prior to that, we have to know, know later than, you know, it'd be me calling them on mo- on the second Friday morning and saying, you have to go ahead to do it. So there's really no time to delay.
And if I can follow up, so, so that concludes me to, to think that we should just leave it alone as designed, there was a reason for it and how it is, and I would say no surveying, if other people want this, let them come in, or what have you, but let's keep the design as it is and move forward with the project.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
ROKA?
Leave it how it is.
Mr. Woods? Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Murris?
We're already doing it as is, can we get a motion to, on the positive, to approve the work, and then if we're gonna vote it down, just vote it down, and then it wouldn't go to council, and we would just do the paving as we were already doing?
I, I would agree to that. It, is there a dollar amount that we have to put tonight to exceed, or?
So no curbs? No curbs?
Motion to do the work?
We always make the motion into the affirmative, so make a motion into the affirmative to do the extra curbs, and then if the council wants to vote it down, which, it seems like they do, vote it down, so then it wouldn't then go to council.
Okay, so you make an affirmative to...
We're already doing the pavement work, so there's no need to add that to a motion.
Mr. Woods?
That, that's where my clarity is, the, the leave it alone?
Yeah.
Is that leave it alone, don't do the paving, or leave it alone, do the paving? Leave it alone as it is contracted and do the paving?
As it is contracted.
Okay.
No curbs.
No curbs.
Thank you.
So, are we doing?
So, what we want is a, a motion in the affirmative to do the curbs, and I'm pretty sure you wanna vote that down, so everybody vote no, and then we're back to where we were, doing just the paving.
So the motion is to... Put in the curbs?
And then vote no.
I, I agree to that.
Okay.
Okay.
Alderman Jacob?
One other comment I'd like to make, uh, the homeowners in, uh, off of Sunnyside, they did a street project there several years back, and they were not, none, none of those people got curbs, and I had a lot of complaints from the residents on Sunnyside, and the stubs there, Catalpa Maple and Cedar, off of Sunnyside, that no, they didn't even, nobody even asked if they wanted curbs, I'm not sure why they weren't asked, but...
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would just kinda ask staff, this seems like an ongoing theme that, you know, an attached part that you would think, whether it's the entrance to a subdivision, or a four-hundred lineal foot Spur Street, or something, you know, just as a general course of business, shouldn't we be adding those in, doesn't that make sense, so we're not having these type of conversations, maybe we could do that in the future?
Yeah, future, future road projects, we'll make sure that we, that is addressed.
Mayor?
Yeah, basically the Sunnyside, I didn't receive a lot of calls, that was just a water main project and resurfacing, and because it wasn't a full reconstruct, it was never brought to the councils a full reconstruct with curbs, so when it went into the budget, went in as strictly a resurfacing water main, and that's, that's a pretty long stretch, there was, there was definitely no contingency money for that whole street when that came out, so I know the residents were pretty upset.
Any more questions? ROKA?
Alderman Jacob?
No.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Catalano?
No.
Alderman Wesley?
No.
Alderman Woods?
No.
Motion fails. Next, does items to be considered for future meetings? None? I got that, I'm coming up with that. Next, I need a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a second? Made motion, yeah. Opposed? Motion carries, we are adjourned.